Good afternoon, and welcome to our December 12th meeting. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Shall we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, we have a couple of presentations today, and we are happy to have with us. First, we're going to hear about the American Veterans Heritage Center Phase Two Lincoln Statue Project. That's a mouthful, but Bill and Kim, come on up and just give us an update about what's happening. I was fortunate enough to see it recently out at Bill's place and see the beautiful, beautiful statue of Lincoln. And so I was like, come share this with everybody. So thanks for being here today.
Great, thank you for the invitation.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to make you aware of the program that we're doing in this project. A little show and tell for everybody, we could have done the PowerPoint, but we brought colored placards. My name is Bill DeFries, I'm the President of the American Veterans Heritage Center. We're an organization out at the Dayton Soldiers Home. We've been in existence for about 23 years. As a result of our work, we preserved many of the buildings that are out there, significantly historical buildings on the Dayton Soldiers Home. And we were able to land the future home of the Dayton National VA History Center that will be debuting in 2030. As part of the visitor's experience, we're dedicating a statue to Abraham Lincoln to honor him for signing into law on March 3rd, 1865, to care for those that borne the battle from the Civil War. Basically, it's a memorial, and it's a statue that's going to be at the corner of Ohio and Kentucky next to the Putnam Library. And it's going to be the entrance of the visitor's center. We expect that there will be several thousand visitors a month that will be coming to the museum when it's fully operational. And so what we're doing is raising, I know I only have a little bit of time, but we're raising the funds to construct this Phase Two, which is the Lincoln Statue Park, to receive the Lincoln statue. We've already got the Lincoln statue, it's in my warehouse on Keewee Street. Many of you have seen that statue. And so we're just about at the $700,000 raise to finish the statue. We have about $100,000 left is all. And once we finish raising that, we'll be able to break ground. We hope in Q1 2024 for an unveiling, tentatively set for March 22nd. A little history lesson, this is the original campus. We had somewhere in the neighborhood of 500,000 to 600,000 visitors a year came from all over the United States to visit our campus in Dayton, Ohio. So it's incredibly significantly historical. It's not only about caring for our veterans, which is what happened when he signed the bill into law as a result of their injuries born during the battle, but it's also the caregivers. There's somewhere in the neighborhood of 411,000 VA employees, and this will be the VA History Center. So we expect a leadership center to eventually be developed on the West Side. It's one of those high tides that can rise all ships in our community. And we expect visitors from around the country, including many of those several hundred thousand VA employees, to come and see their history. The first thing that's going to happen is the VA History Office is creating a digital experience, and that should be opened up next year. So you'll be able to go on campus and use your devices to be able to see historically what it looked like by standing, let's say, in front of the Protestant Chapel, or in front of the Catholic Church, or in front of the Grotto. All of those things that our organization preserved. Dale Huffman fans, Dayton Daily News. Our organization spun up in 1999 with Judge Walter Rice as a result of an article being written in the Dayton Daily News by Dale Huffman. And the title was, "Does the Little Chapel Have a Prayer?" They were getting ready to tear down the Protestant Chapel, which was the second church built on federal land with federal dollars after West Point. And the community rallied together and successfully saved that church. So this really is a historical opportunity for us to raise the statue and bring attention to the Dayton, Ohio, community and supporting our veterans. So, any questions?
Well, can you tell us a little bit about the statue? Because I think it's a great story, the artist and the whole process of that. Because it's beautiful.
You should have some packets, you'll be able to see a picture of the statue itself. Mike Major is a nationally renowned artist, and he's a product of Dayton, Ohio. He went to high school here in the 70s. And in the afternoon, he studied art at the Dayton Art Institute, one of those co-op programs where he honed his skill. He has his studio is in Urbana. And so we commissioned Mike to create a sitting statue of Lincoln with the bill in his hand and his pen. And he's got this look of satisfaction on his face. And he'll be situated on an angle, and he's overlooking the Grotto. And the Grotto were beautiful gardens that the Civil War veterans built themselves as a result of quarrying the limestone to build the buildings and created lakes. And then they created these beautiful gardens that are out there. And so he'll be looking out kind of existentially at the Grotto's, seeing the parade ground and Civil War veterans in parade formation, hundreds of thousands of people coming to see them. They were like rock stars. They got into their 80s and 90s at the turn of the century. That's the 19th century, like 1898, 99, 1900. And they're, you know, they're like OGs standing there in their Civil War uniforms that are 90 years old, and people are taking pictures of them with Civil War cannons. It was a very cool place to be. I'm proud of the fact that we're able to pull this together for our community. And Mike Major's done a wonderful job. I would invite anybody that would like to see the statue. You can make arrangements with me to come down and see it, like Debbie did, in our warehouse.
So in his hand, I think that's a great story, too. Why don't you tell us what's in his hand that he's holding?
In his hand is the bill that he signed and the pen. And he's got it, he's just finished signing it. He knows that Civil War veterans are going to be taken care of. And it was the last seminal bill and document that he signed because 44 days later, he was assassinated.
And the bill was to basically sign the soldiers' homes into law?
Yep, yep. We were one of two, right?
It was one of three.
Oh, three, okay.
And that's actually a very important part. You listened to the presentation, right? We had Mike Major, the artist there. This all started because of the community, right? So Coolidge Wall is one of the oldest law firms in the state of Ohio, right here in Dayton, Ohio. And Louis Gunkel is the principal that started that firm in the 1840s. He's from Germantown. And his partner was killed, he was a Civil War Colonel, and was killed. So Louis Gunkel became a champion of veterans' care. And he's the one that worked with, he sat on Abraham Lincoln's election committee. And he was an elector at the state level. So he had influence in the community and at the state level. And he was able to secure $50,000 from the community to buy the 500 acres on the West Side so that we could be one of the three locations. The other two are Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and Toga, Maine. And Dayton became the executive headquarters for all three of them. It's basically what began what we know today as the modern Veterans Administration, right? It all started here in Dayton. And all the decisions were made by Louis Gunkel and the executive committee here in Dayton.
That's great. And the last thing I want you to tell us about the artist, the other statue that we have right here in Dayton on Courthouse Square.
Yes, we have another Lincoln statue on Courthouse Square. Many of you have probably seen it when you've been downtown. And this is the same artist. And it's just nice to have those two Lincoln statues and have the Lincoln statue out at the VA representing the veterans and what he's done for them.
Thank you, thank you for what you do.
Yeah, and you know, the VA Center, the whole thing, the whole complex, how many acres is the whole?
It's a little over 500 acres.
500 acres.
And it serves, I think, over 40, maybe over 50,000 veterans annually.
It serves more than that, we have more than 40,000 veterans here in Montgomery County. And it has an 18-county catchment area. So it serves our veterans as far north as Lima, east as Springfield. We have Richmond, Indiana, and we have Middletown, Ohio. So we have community clinics in all those areas, and Dayton VA is the main hospital.
And Kim, why don't you tell us what you do in your day job?
Besides volunteering for too many nonprofits. So I'm Kim Frisco, I'm the Executive Director for Montgomery County Veteran Services. We're over at 627 Edwin C. Moses Boulevard. And we're here to help our veterans get all of the benefits that they've earned and deserved during their service, as well as we work to help them with any financial assistance. We have an attorney over there helping our veterans with legal counsel. We have a dental program to assist. We help with our veterans with transportation. And of course, we're on the rise this year, but we've already assisted with 47 indigent burials for our veterans. We're happy to serve, we're all a bunch of veterans or those with veteran status. If anyone needs assistance, they come see us, we're more than happy to talk to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe in our packet there is if we want to make a contribution, and I are still accepting money. And there will be a recognition at a certain level, correct, around the memorial?
Correct.
Is it $500? Is that what you guys are trying to?
Yeah, that's the minimum to be recognized on the plan at the base.
Yeah, beautiful, it's going to be so beautiful. Thank you for sharing this with us.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Can't wait to see it done.
And you know, the other thing I want to say, and that is, you know, it's such a wonderful treasure here, this whole, that whole complex. And I know that they have guided tours if anybody is ever interested. And I just think that people really need to go and take a tour because, you know, we've all been there at different events, and it's just fascinating, just fascinating, just beautiful, beautiful.
You can go to our website, American Veterans Heritage Center, and we have a beautiful 15-page PDF. It's self-guided walking tour, it's color and everything. You can download that and carry that with you. We encourage you, it's not a military installation, it's open to the public. And that's, you know, part of our vision and mission is to make sure that folks know that you can go out there and visit it.
Well, and the Grotto is one of the most beautiful areas in the state. I mean, it is second to none.
And we're proud to be a part of this nonprofit that is preserving that location and everything about our veterans. Thank you both.
Thank you, thank you so much. And next, we're honored to have with us today our State Treasurer, Robert Sprague. And he's going to come, and he's got his team here with him, and they're going to talk about this Stable Account update. We had a brief update, I don't know, six months, eight months ago, but we'd love to hear more, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Well, thank you so much, Commissioner. I just, first of all, I want to say thank you to Kim and Bill and all of you for what you're doing to honor veterans. My son Cole is 22 this year, he's the oldest of five of our children. And he is down at the Citadel. And when he, he's down there on an ROTC scholarship. And when he graduates, he'll be a Second Lieutenant in the United States Army. And I can just say that on behalf of at least one family that will have a veteran and a young person that's serving overseas at a very difficult time for our country, and I think very difficult time for the world, just thank you for what you're doing to honor veterans and also take care of them. It means a lot, so thank you very much. We're here today really to talk and thank you for our partnership with the Stable Accounts. And for those of you that are unfamiliar with the Stable Accounts, these are accounts that individuals who are living with a disability can use to save money because we have this wonderful rule at the state level that if you have more than $2,000 of assets in your name, we will take away your medical benefits, even if you are living with a disability. It's not such a wonderful rule, that was tug and cheek. So the Stable Accounts help individuals who are living with disabilities be able to earn their own money, save more than $2,000 of their own money, and be able to spend their own money. And I'll tell you, we were at a similar presentation last year. An individual who was using a Stable Account came forward and gave her testimony. And she talked about how she used it to spend on everyday things, excuse me, that she needs in her life. That she loved being able to be employed and have relationships in the workplace. But the last thing she said almost brought me to tears, and I think summed it up. She said, "You know, the Stable Account has given me something that nothing else has. It has given me self-esteem, to be able to be employed and make my own decisions about money." So we came here today to recognize you, to thank the Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Lieberman, for having us today. I know Commissioner Rice from her previous role as Treasurer, and we work together very well on doing some very good things with the investment portfolios for local governments and also for the State Treasury around the state. I want to thank the Commissioners and also thank our County Treasurer, John McManus, who really has kind of led the charge and said, "We have to do this. What can we do to get payroll direct deposit here for the Stable Accounts?" And thank you, John, for your leadership and for being so adamant about this idea and helping it move forward. And also for our County Auditor in the back, who is going to be tasked with the implementation of all this. And without you, none of this, none of this would be possible. And what this program does is allows individuals who are living with a disability to put up to $17,000 in a Stable Account of their own money or from a parent or a grandparent. And what the Montgomery County is doing is allowing direct deposit of those funds. And so it streamlines this process and makes it much easier if you have a son or a daughter or grandson or granddaughter to make a contribution into that account. And if you earn money, you can save up to an additional $13,590, is that right, Elena?
Yes, but the limits are going up in 2024.
And people will be able to save more money in 2024. And at a time when inflation is nipping at all of our budgets, everything has become more expensive, individuals who are living with a disability are no exception. And so these accounts are really very, very handy. And we appreciate you being a partner with the Treasurer's Office to try to help out individuals here in Dayton and in the Montgomery County area with something that is very real, that they can use to improve their lives. So what else am I missing here, Elena? Anything else I need to mention or that I've forgotten about?
Well, we have over 37,000 accounts since we launched, which is impressive.
Come on up here, just a second, why don't you fill us in? Why don't you fill us in? Elena Bowers is with our Stable Team, and she can fill you in on a couple of the statistics because she knows them by heart. Elena, why don't you come up?
Well, I wrote them down because working for the Treasurer, you got to write everything down properly. But we surpassed 37,000 accounts last month, which is amazing because that means that there's 37 individuals that, whether they're working themselves and that's their money, or maybe mom and dad are helping out, that's, you know, something that they can rely on and have long-term goals and a safety net. And then in Montgomery County, we have almost 500 individual accounts, which is still a huge achievement, so. And then the assets, total assets are over $370 million for the whole 37,000 accounts, which is incredible. So our outreach, we've been all over the state of Ohio since we launched. I'm really proud to continue our outreach in this area of the state. So, and the process of allowing individuals to join this initiative is very simple. So we're looking forward to working with the Auditor's Office on promoting this program internally, providing a webinar, presentation, any support that the county needs, we'll be able to do that.
Great, thank you so much.
Thanks now, if you have any questions, I appreciate you asking them while Elena's still up here. But thank you, Elena, I really appreciate it. And so we have, we have a proclamation that we would like to issue from the Ohio Treasurer's Office. And if I could have the County Treasurer and the County Auditor come up here with me, we'd like to present this.
Thank you for doing that, because I was going to call them both.
Okay, good, all right, we were on the same, we were on the same. But we appreciate all of our elected office holders and appreciate not just your partnership with the Ohio Treasurer's Office, it's really about helping individuals with disabilities in your community, so.
I have one for you, too.
Oh, is it?
I have nothing for you.
Perfect, so Commissioner, if you could, Commissioner, if you could come down here, could I present this to you as well, would that be all right? How do you normally do this?
Well, that's what we do. Normally, we're the ones giving the proclamation, so it's wonderful. And Pam, do you want to come up and join us?
Maybe all three, could all three?
Yes, we can. And now she's coming up, you know, when we talk about people with disabilities, this is our Superintendent of our DVS. And, you know, this is, this is a great tool. I mean, it really is, and so thank you for doing this, and we will, we will come down and join you.
Thank you for all you do here. Thank you, if you come down, and we'll just get a quick picture, would that be all right? Laura, you want to get a quick picture? I think you're quite right. Is that a fan or?
Okay, thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Crown here, don't be crowded.
We went in the center.
Whatever you think. You, you, it's your, your.
Yeah, there's the desk.
Okay, all right, very good, here we go. Where are we going? We're just moving over here.
This is good, yeah. Right, okay, if you want to look at me real quick, and then, hey, Matt? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, yeah, you guys don't have to stay. I mean, it's going to be a really rousing meeting, but I get it, you got to get back to Columbus, so. Thanks for being here, all of you, thank you.
Don't you look like Julie Solis?
Yes, she does. All right, we will move on now to our County Engineer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. We have just one item today, and it's necessary that we pull that item from the agenda today due to some last-minute technicalities.
Okay, well, we'll see it eventually.
He just wanted to talk, that's all.
Of course. Our next item is County Sheriff, Rob. Rob, Rob's not here, Michael.
Looking around for him.
I know, like, wait a minute, Rob's not here. The other electives were here, but not Rob.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 1588, amend the agreement with NAF Care Inc. for Correctional Healthcare Services to exercise option number two in an amount not to exceed $7,557,409.87 through December 31st, 2024.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Juvenile Court?
Hello.
Hello, everyone. On behalf of Juvenile Court, we have Resolution 23-1589 to amend the agreement with ROKA Incorporated for rewire CBT training and coaching by extending the term through June 30th, 2024. And then the next three resolutions we have pulled for, to be presented in January. And then we have Resolution 23-1593 for Dr. Nay Nash R. Patel doing business as the Institute for Integrated Health Solutions, LLC, to oversee the delivery of healthcare services for youth at the Juvenile Court's Detention Services Department in an amount not to exceed $36,000 through December 31st, 2024.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Treasurer, he should have stayed, he couldn't have done so.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Treasurer's Office, we have Resolution 1594, appropriate the Montgomery County Delinquent Tax and Assessment Collection DTAC Fund as of December 31st, 2023, to the offices of the County Treasurer and prosecuting attorney, and approve the 2024 annual appropriation.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
County Administrator, Michael.
Under the County Administrator, under the Clerk of the Commission, we have approved the minutes of the meeting on December 5th, 2023, Resolution 1595, approval bills, and Resolution 1596, approval personnel actions. Both of those lists are available in the Clerk's office.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And my thing wasn't moving. Tyler, Administrative Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have several resolutions for you today, beginning with 1597. We will actually pull this resolution until next month. Resolution 1598 renews the agreement with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for stop-loss insurance for the self-funded health plan in an amount not to exceed $1,223,110 through December 31st of 2024. Resolution 1599 authorizes a memorandum of understanding with Educational Resources Incorporated for the submission of a grant application through the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act Energy Efficiency Program for Ohio Communities. The next two resolutions authorize intergovernmental agreements with the Regis Commission for Justice Web Services through December 31st of 2025. The first is Resolution 1600 for the development, for development and database services in an amount not to exceed $1,533,314. And the next resolution is 1601. This is for the development and implementation of multi-factor authentication in an amount not to exceed $496,720. And the next two resolutions authorize agreements. The first is 1602 with the City of Dayton to provide an electronic home detention program for the county municipal courts in an amount not to exceed $300,000 through December 31st of 2024. 1603 is with Brown and Bill's Architects for Construction Administration and Observation Services for the administration building elevator modernization project in an amount not to exceed $165,160 through July, excuse me, July 1st, 2025. And the last two resolutions solicit requests for qualifications for construction manager at risk services for the facilities management department. The first is 1604 for the Mental Health Detox and Behavioral Health Units Project, and this is in the jail. And then Resolution 1605 is the Juvenile Justice Center Probation Relocation and Renovation Project. And this is moving the, the, sort of, the offices out at Merrimack to the, to the building here.
That's big, thank you. Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the one I found kind of interesting is 1603, they're going to observe us using the elevators, or what are they going to observe?
They oversee all the contractors to make sure they're doing what they should be doing.
Okay, good, that's good, all right, thank you. Environmental Services, Matt.
Thank you, Commissioners, for Environmental Services. We have Resolution 1606, accept an easement deed for water lines through property belonging to Meyer Stores Limited Partnership in connection with the development of Miami, sorry, Meyer Miami Township, and record the same. Resolution 1607, set the dates and times for the 2024 regular meetings of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, the Solid Waste Management Policy Committee, and the Financial Advisory Committee. 1608, accept the surety and subdividers contract from Meyer, Inc. for the Meyer Miami Township development in the amount of $228,758. Resolution 1609, release 100% of the performance bond and subdividers contract from Divided Ridge Associates, LTD, for the Washington Trace Development Section 14. The following four are to amend agreements by extending the terms through June 30th, 2024. Resolution 1610 with Fishbeck, Inc. for the concrete tank rehabilitation Eastern Regional Phase Three Project. 1611 Strand Associates, Inc. for construction consulting services for the Habitat and Summit Med Lift Station Replacement Project. 1612 with Sinisus Construction Company for construction of the Habitat and Summit Med Lift Station Replacement Project. And Resolution 1613 with Buckeye Construction and Restoration LTD for the concrete tank rehabilitation. for the concrete tank rehabilitation Eastern Regional Phase Three Project. The next two are to accept easement deeds for sanitary sewer lines and record the same. Sixteen-fourteen with Meyer Stores Limited Partnership in connection with the development of Meyer Miami Township Sanitary One and Meyer Stores Limited Partnership in connection with the development of Meyer Miami Township Sanitary Two. The next two are to release one hundred percent of the letters of credit in the subdividers contracts. Sixteen-sixteen with OCRD Holdings LTD for the Storage Shop USA Phase One Project. Sixteen-seventeen with Oaks Tree Development LLC for the Winger Village Section Three Development. And the last two are to release one hundred percent of cash sureties and subdividers contracts from Trails Partners LLC. Resolution sixteen eighteen with Trails of Saddle Creek Development Section eleven and sixteen-nineteen Trails of Saddle Creek Development Section twelve.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. O and B, John.
I thank you. We have resolution sixteen twenty to authorize a statement of work with Crowe LLP for D three sixty-five technical and functional support services in an amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. This is our annual support agreement for the financial system.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Human services. And Michelle, I see that, um, they decided that you were the one that was going to have to do all of these resolutions, but we're happy to see you.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. Um, I will begin with human services planning and development. Resolution twenty-three sixteen twenty-one, acceptance of a grant from the Ohio Department of Development to provide rapid rehousing assistance in the amount of four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. I will try to get through these. Resolutions twenty-three sixteen twenty-two through sixteen forty-six. Um, we are amending these agreements to exercise options and modify articles through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Catholic Social Services for the Life Essentials Senior Guardianship Program in an amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. Good Neighbor House for the Supportive Dental Services Program in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Catholic Social Services for Irma's House in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Greater Dayton Volunteers Lawyers Project for the Support of Pro-Bono Legal Services for Domestic Violence Victims in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. House of Bread for the Lunch Three Hundred and Sixty-Five Days a Year Program, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Big Brothers and Big Sisters of the Greater Miami Valley for mentoring services for Ruskin and Cleveland Elementary Students, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Artemis Center for Advocacy Services for Victims of Domestic Violence, not to exceed one hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred dollars. The Food Bank Incorporated for Hunger Relief in an amount not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Dakota Center for the After-School Program, not to exceed thirty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Legal Aid of Western Ohio for Collaborative Holistic Legal Services for Victims of Domestic Violence in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And we continue. Greater Dayton Volunteers Lawyers Project for the CSEP Program in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Legal Aid of Western Ohio for Legal Aid Assistance for the Stable Employment Program, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Wesley Community Center Incorporated for Job Ready Day One Workforce Development, not to exceed ninety-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars. Goodwill Easter Sales for Medical Equipment Loan, not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars. Legal Aid of Western Ohio for the Frail and Elderly Supported Services, not to exceed one hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. Rebuilding Together Dayton Incorporated for Neighbor Care in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. Artemis Center for Hotline and Trauma Informed Services, not to exceed two hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars. Homeful for West Dayton Food Access Two Point O, not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars. Daybreak for Employment Opportunities, not to exceed one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eighty-five dollars. Omega Community Development Corporation for Scholars of Hope, not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. Omega Community Development Corporation for Hope Center Family Services, in an amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand dollars. Wesley Community Center Incorporated for Seniors, Gems, and Transportation, not to exceed one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. Urban League of Greater Southwestern Ohio for the Adult Solid Opportunities for Advancement and Retention Program, not to exceed one hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. House of Bread for Outreach Meals, not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Dakota Center Incorporated for the Golden Ager's Program, not to exceed nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars. Does anyone need a break? And now, moving on to job and family services. Resolution twenty-three sixteen forty-seven, authorizing an agreement with Dayton Children's Hospital to provide services through Carehouse, which is our children's advocacy center in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars for calendar year twenty twenty-four. Twenty-three sixteen forty-eight is accepting a grant from the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services to provide funding for our local youth advisory board, not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And twenty-three sixteen forty-nine, authorizing the purchase from Northwoods for the sets, which is our child support program, auto-fill modifications in an amount not to exceed four thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. Um, resolutions twenty-three sixteen fifty through sixteen fifty-two are inter-agency agreements for calendar year twenty-four. We are partnering with the Communications Department for the purpose of providing public information services. Child Support Enforcement Agency is partnering with the Office of Strategic Initiatives to share the responsibilities of the fatherhood initiative position. And we partner with Business Services for the Seek Work Opportunity Program in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Moving on to substitute care agreements through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, we have twenty-three sixteen fifty-three Anchored Immense Movement LLC and twenty-three sixteen fifty-four Stepping Stones of Ohio LLC. We are exercising options for interpreting services for calendar year twenty twenty-four. Sixteen fifty-five with Miami Valley Interpreters LLC, not to exceed two thousand, five hundred dollars. And sixteen fifty-six Propio LS LLC, not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
You know, these.
I know.
So, I mean, it's like, you read these and it's, of course, we know all these agencies and it's just sad.
Well, we couldn't do it without them.
But thank heavens, we can help them. No question about it. So, thank you.
And I'm sure people notice oftentimes we're giving the same nonprofit, but it's for different programs.
Yeah.
And so, we don't just lump it all together. They, we have to, you know, have each program separate. But, yeah, these are our partners that are really lifting up our community and, again, we just couldn't do it without them.
Yeah. Move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Michelle and team. Um, I know it takes a lot to get to this point with all these contracts that have to be monitored and it's a, it's a heavy lift, but, um, I'm glad that we are able to do this in our community.
Commissioners, I'd also like to give thanks to our Human Services Levy Council.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Because part of the levy, the work that the levy does, as you just mentioned, uh, supports our safety net.
Yeah. Not easy work. Okay, uh, business services.
I am.
Tyler was blocking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioner. Under Business Services Workforce Development, sixteen fifty-seven accepts a grant from the Workforce Initiative Association Business Resource Network in the amount of ninety-two thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars. The next two authorize agreements, sixteen fifty-eight JOG Miami Valley Doing Business as Yes for Youth to provide in-school, out-of-school employment and training services in an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Sixteen fifty-nine Clothes That Work to Provide Interview Appropriate Clothing and Professional Workplace Attire to Non-TANF Eligible Clients in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four with the option to extend. The next two authorize agreements to provide job readiness, basic skills workshops for employable adults through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four with options to extend. Sixteen sixty Omega Communities Development Corporation, an amount of thirty thousand dollars. Sixteen sixty-one Counselor, Council for Community Outreach and Development, in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. The next two, exercise the option to extend agreements for job readiness, basic skills workshops for employable adults through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. First one, sixteen sixty-two West Care of Ohio, in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Sixteen sixty-three Wesley Community Senator, in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. The next two are under Community and Economic Development. Sixteen sixty-four, authorize an agreement with Ohio Independent Agricultural Societies for campground improvements and stage in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And sixteen sixty-five, approve of the fall twenty twenty-three economic development project funding recommendations for the Edge Program.
Well, I love that you're getting a stage there at the fairgrounds. My gosh, how many times have I complained about?
Um, maybe fifty. I don't know.
Fifty. I'm telling you, it was dangerous. That's all I can say. So, thank you. I move to approve. I second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
She's right. The stage was pretty, um, rickety. But, you know, uh, you know, to have the independent agricultural societies to help with the improvements, um.
Yeah.
That's big. And, um, our fairgrounds is really, you know, five and a half years into it, it's really taken shape. And I think it's something we can proud of, be very proud of. Um, you know, the first year is like, is this going to work? But now, it's, it's really beautiful out there in one of our parks that we love to show off. But, yeah, we're really happy for that. And then the, um, the Edge projects this year.
Yeah.
Good stuff. Really, all those projects, um, were very important to our jurisdictions and, um, we're looking for success from those. Yes, they really are. Um, it, that was a tough one, too, um, to.
Yeah.
Because we couldn't give all the money out to everyone. Than what we had, but, um, the group, which is made up of, um, all the jur, well, not all the jur, many of our jurisdictions and then community people, I think, came up with a great resolution on these and, um, I'm happy that we're able to, uh, accept them. All right, another county commission portion. Uh, we have, uh, reappoint members to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, SWAC, and the Solid Waste Management Policy Committee, SWMCE, Judy's favorite thing to be.
Absolutely.
A member of, for two-year terms through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. And we have twenty-three, uh, sixteen sixty-six to appoint Bill Duncan, mayor of the city of Oakwood, and Jeff Mims, mayor of the city of Dayton. And they have been recommended by the Mayors and Managers Association. Sixteen sixty-seven is to appoint Georgia Ann Godsey, Harrison Township trustee, and Gary Smiga, Washington Township fiscal officer, recommended by the Montgomery County Township Association. And sixteen sixty-eight Shanice Turner-Slos, Commissioner of the city of Dayton. And she has been recommended by the city of Dayton.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do have, um, just one citizen signed up to speak. Um, we have our friend, uh, Mr. Feaster. And Mr. Feaster, come on up.
Willie Feaster. I'm like talking about Christmas. You know, we know Christmas is coming in about another week. But, and everybody going to be having a good time and all that. But the downside of Christmas is out of all the holidays, July the fourth is the most violent holiday it is. There's more killing and homicides on July the fourth than anything. But Christmas is also right behind it. More people on Christmas commit suicide. They lonely, they depressed on Christmas. You know, I think about all the, all this, like in prison, all the suicide cells would be full. It'd be more people hang theyself, commit homicide, even in society. You know, I, I was talking to Deputy Hammond last week, Deputy Sheriff Hammond. And he was telling me about the little young man out here at the Walmart that did the homicide. He said, I looked at the video. He was at the, uh, BMB, smiling, giggling, talking. But nobody never knew the pain he had inside of him. He was caring. So, I'm saying this to this here that it's going to be millions of people having a good time for Christmas. But at the same token, it's going to be millions of people lonely, hurt, depressed, sad, angry, everything to go with it. You know, I, I, I sat in a room in the house over on the east side and, and, and y'all know what that is. And a guy walked over to my door like, he said, Willie, you want to buy my TV? I said, what I need your TV for, bruh? Well, I want to go to my family. I don't want to go empty-handed, man. So, I'm really getting my, my, I said, no, bruh, you ain't got to do that, man. You ain't got to do that. But, but I have a question. I want to ask Ms. Dodge. And the only reason I want to ask you this question, because I think you've got the most knowledge and wisdom out of everybody up there.
She does.
I'm serious.
She wrote, I didn't hear him. What?
She didn't hear me.
The what?
The most wisdom. Oh, gosh.
I think you had the most wisdom.
That's a nice way to put it.
Why? Why?
Is that good or bad?
It's good. Why? You know, I'm serious. It's serious, though.
No.
Why on Christmas, man, is, is, is so much depression and hurt and loneliness? I mean, y'all going to be having a good time. Y'all going to be at your family, kids, loved ones, eating, drinking, you know, all the, uh, but the flip side of that, it's going to be somebody somewhere walking. So, I'm saying this, even to me, when you see somebody, say hi. Good evening, good morning, good night. Merry Christmas. Because that person that you think is smiling and giggling and all that can be really hurting inside and you will never, never, never know it. Because they don't show it. It stays inside of, like Deputy Hammond was telling me about the kid out there. Out there. They never knew that little boy had that pain in him. But the question to Ms. Dodge is, why on Christmas, out of all the days, there's so many people hurting?
Well, because I think there's so much media attention on, isn't this wonderful? Everybody's happy and the, the ads are, you know, the families are together and they're kissing and hugging and, you know, passing out presents. And there's always somebody that just lost a loved one and they don't have that. Or their family's out of state and they're not seeing them. And so, you know, it, it breaks their heart. But you're right. They keep it inside. They don't, they don't show it. So, we appreciate you bringing that to everybody's attention. To your right, give everybody a shout out and hug or whatever.
All right, thank you.
Well, another thing, Willie, I think today's paper, if you haven't seen it yet, there's a, you can go up and get a copy in our office if you want. The warm line. And, and it's something that's small, but it's an, it's an option where people can call and just have a friendly voice, right? And that's why it's Warm Line.
Oh, it's called Warm Line.
There's a whole story about it. Um, but you're right, isolation, uh, is killing people, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it, it came to light a lot more in the pandemic and we see so many of our seniors affected by it. But you're right, every, almost everybody can be, every family can be. And, um, as we look to the next couple of weeks, the holidays and New Year's, you know, you're, you're so right, Willie. Just smile, say hello. Merry Christmas if you want, you know, but.
So, can I call you?
You can call me.
Can I call you on Christmas?
Anytime, Willie. You know that.
I'm still going to hold you today.
Okay. You can hold me too, Willie. You know how to find me.
I do.
I do.
But thanks, thanks for bringing that up because it is such an important thing as we move into the next couple of weeks. And again, today, I think the paper did a nice job talking about that warm line and why it is so important. But thank you. All right, county administrator.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, you know, I'd like to congratulate, uh, commissioners Lieberman and Dodge. Uh, while we were at the, uh, County Commissioners Association of Ohio Annual Meeting last week, uh, they were both presented with Decades of Dedication Award for serving ten or more years as our county commissioner.
Decades. I know.
That's, that's what the.
And that kind of leads into what Willie said about you, too.
Oh, that's, that's what the award was. So, uh, m, both of you have served, uh, a lot of terms as commissioners and I, and I think, uh, that has served us well. When we looked at, um, going through the tornado and going through COVID, I think your experience along with the experience that Commissioner Rice brings, uh, both of your background in having multiple office holders and, and working in offices, uh, I think it has served us well. And experience counts for something. Contrary to what you hear in the media today, experience means a lot. And so, I would like to thank you and congratulate you on behalf of the entire.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
You know, and we are, I don't want to speak for Judy. I'm just so thrilled to be where we are with this whole team.
Yeah.
Because I say this often, but you guys make us look so good and we're so proud of you. And, and Michael mentioned the conference we were at last week. And when we see how other counties function, how other commissioners function together, we realize how lucky we are. And, um, our county engineer, he, their conference is with ours.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, and that's meaningful to us because we, we know the good relationship we have with our county engineer. But, um, not everybody has that. So, um, I just wanted to say thank you. And then I'm scrolling through the rest of the notes and I do not see the biggest thing that happened last week at our County Commissioners, County Engineers Association meetings was that our very own Emily.
Yes.
Became the state president. Uh, what are the, all those initials? Say them out loud, Emily, because they just don't roll off the tongue. There you go. There you go. And Emily was elected president last week and we were all able to be there.
Yeah.
Chris and Michael came up and.
It's part of the realm.
The realm. And we, we're just so proud of you. I mean, that is a, think about that, the whole state.
Yeah.
Our clerk of the commission is the president. And we are very proud of you. No one deserves this more than you. You only get one year of rein. Oh, darn. Well, we will celebrate it. We will celebrate it and you're, you're the best, Em. We love you. Okay, so, yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. Next Tuesday, the nineteenth, our workforce department is planning a day to help people prepare for job interviews. And we do that often, but I think, um, there's, there's days that we just set aside to really focus and help. There will be three workshops that day and people can attend all three or just one. Um, from eight-thirty to ten, the Job Search Strategies Workforce will cover how to research the industry you're interested in and to learn networking tips. Second course is from ten to, uh, noon and it's on powerful resumes. So, our team will be there to help, uh, people work on their resume, how to make that resume stand out from the rest. And then the final workshop is interview tactics and that's from one fifteen to three fifteen. And that will guide people on, uh, tips that you can present yourself in a better way when you're in an interview to impress potential employers. So, all of those workshops are next week at the Job Center. And you might even get to see the beautiful Michelle there if you're around. The red, you, so you'll enter the Job Center at the red door at one eleven South Edwin C. Moses. And you can find out more about that on our website at thejobcenter.org.
Yeah, that'll be good.
It will be good.
Excuse me. Now, as we all know, Christmas is coming just very shortly. And if you receive a large gift, I'm not going to say what it could be, or anything packed in styrofoam, please consider dropping it off at Montgomery County Styrofoam's Recycling Event, I can't believe this, on Saturday, January sixth. That's two thousand twenty-four, from nine AM to one PM at the Activity Center Park, two-twenty-one North Main Street in Centerville. Now, this is going to be a partnership between Montgomery County, the City of Centerville and Eco Development. This event will repurpose styrofoam into surfboards, which is really necessary here in this area. Picture frames and other useful items. Pardon?
They surf down on our river. You've seen them surfing.
No.
I'm serious. Yeah, they do. Okay.
I've seen them kayaking and.
No, they surf too, but that's okay.
That's okay. Good, thank you.
You learned something.
I did. All right. Over the past three years, our quarterly recycling events have kept nearly forty-one thousand pounds of styrofoam out of our landfill and that's very, very important.
It is. And just that location, um.
Yeah.
People may not know where the Activity Center is. It's behind which church, Ms. Center?
Incarnation.
Incarnation. And so if you just turn in there, it's behind Incarnation and the city has, um, buildings there. But it's, you may not know and let you know.
Yep.
That's right. And the, the last thing to mention is that the Animal Resource Center, uh, will be at the Dayton Mall on this Saturday, along with the Humane Society of Greater Dayton and SIXA for the Annual Home for the Holidays Adoption Event. It will be inside the mall, so not outside, by the JCPenney and the, I haven't been here, the Meowsa.
It's cute.
Cat Boutique. Meowsa, cute name. Uh, both dogs and cats will be available for adoption and the R.C. will also be selling dog licenses at the event. And I did get my dog license already. Day two, day two.
Don't tell me, I know.
Oh, she didn't get it on day one. I didn't get it on day one. I got it on day two. Anyways, it's a, try to get it early. So, you can go to the mall Saturday between ten and four and finish some last minute shopping and get your dog license and bring home a new cat or dog for the family. And find out more at mcanimals.org, although I would encourage you to be very serious about it.
Yeah.
Uh, don't do it on a whim, think it through.
Yeah.
Uh, because we really do want it to be a forever home.
It's a commitment.
Uh, and i- it's, it's hard on everybody if you're not really able to take care of it. Dogs that are turned in or not, or just left all over, all over our county. Yeah. But there are, there are pets available just waiting for a forever family, so. Right now. I was on the site a couple of days ago. There's really adorable dogs on, from all three of our, our two partners in us, but, right? Yeah, so thanks, everybody. And our next meeting, which will be our last meeting of two thousand twenty-three, is next Tuesday, the nineteenth, right here, be here, at one-thirty.
Right, exactly. Move to adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a great week.